All our parts in place, I'll call this May 15th, four o'clock meeting of the Salina City Planning Commission to order. The first item of business is approval of the summary minutes of May 1st. Gentlemen, you've reviewed the minutes, is there a motion to approve or any comments?
Dean, I need to amend the minutes. I am shown as present for the last meeting, I was not, I was absent, so if I could just be moved, please, to the absent line.
Other additions or corrections? Thank you very much, is there a motion to approve?
I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved.
And the final version will reflect that Mr. Brooks is, was not present when voting on the first, so.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing items number two, continuation of the public hearing on application PDD 791H, the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think you're familiar with this property location and the project itself, and we've given you quite a bit of background and history, so I think our focus will be on the most recent amendments and why this application is before you in its present form. And so, John, if you could get on to the 2011 plans, we'll focus on those. And the purpose is that we have a planned development district that was approved, and the sole permitted use by the ordinance that was approved was mini warehouse use, and that was the one and only use, and that included the indoor pod storage. This is still looking like the 2009 plan, John, what we need is, is what you've identified, I think, as nine and 10 there, or at least 11, but maybe it's 11 and 12. The, to summarize the changes, which would best be summarized by referring to this drawing, is the fact that, again, mini warehouse complex, which is a complex of buildings that people use to store personal storage items and rent cubicles or spaces for that purpose, and that worked pretty consistently for the first five buildings in Phase One. And so, these are conventional mini warehouse cubicles or storage units, and then in Phase Two, these larger buildings were constructed, and they were designed to store what is commonly referred to as pods or personal on-demand storage cubes. And so, the items that are before you today that are changes from the original concept and the original planned development district is, one, this was designed to be non-habitable space, so no provisions were made for parking, and again, one of the reasons that this started out as a mini warehouse complex is because this particular piece of property was just about impossible to get public sewer service to, so one use that you can develop that doesn't require public sewer service is mini warehouse. But there is a plan or proposal to have a complex office here, and that would have a restroom and the, have an arrangement to have a sewer connection from here over to a private line here. In that subdivision, College Park, or known as Wheat Ridge, directly to the east, all the streets, water and sewer lines are private, they're not public city lines, so there's an arrangement between the private line here and for a connection to a bathroom there. So, there's an office here, if you have an office, you've got to have parking for that office, because it's a public accommodation, one of those has to be handicapped accessible parking. So, the idea is that there would be parking here, and there's not a belief that that would be a problem as far as this aisle for accessibility, there are alternate ways to get at the units there. So that is item one, and that's in Building Six there. The other proposal was that in order for people to access what is in their pods, that they wanted the ability to pull pods out of these buildings and set them out here temporarily to get access to them, or to make them more accessible for the owners of what's stored in those pods. That was looked at by the fire department in terms of accessibility to get around these buildings, there's a fence along here, and there was not a belief that that created an access or safety problem, but the original concept here did not allow for any outdoor storage of any items. So, this would be out here on a temporary basis, and then the proposal here is to have permanent empty pod storage, stored outside the building in this location here, remembering that we have a fence line all the way across here, and so our outdoor storage would be behind the fence line here. And then the fourth item had to do with uses in that north building, and as opposed to the mini warehouse concept only, there was a desire expressed to be able to have some form of general commercial storage, or even the ability to have automobiles to do detail work, or other types of things there, but for staff's purposes, we're a little unclear about the plans for Building Seven, and whether that would involve any kind of actual public occupancy or habitable space. So, everything here was set up under the concept of non-climatized storage with no space that would be occupied by employees or the public, and so, the change to that is, is an office space here with pod storage here, and a desire expressed to be able to rent out space here for general commercial storage, or even use for people who had vehicles or things of that nature. And that is, by definition, mini warehouse doesn't include the storage of automobiles or things that have fuel, because they're not, they're not designed with fire containment in mind. So, I think the number one thing that we need help with the applicant from is a further clarification of what the intended planned uses are in Building Seven, that north building. And then, John, you've got, what is, you've got photographs, and then these, these other maps that you gave me, have you, are those in the, able to be displayed?
Yes, they are.
One of the items that has been most time-consuming, and the reason that staff has not yet signed off on final occupancy for the north building is because this was done in three phases, this is Phase One, this is Phase Two, this is Phase Three, and so the landscaping had not survived and taken and been established at the end of Phase One, so completion and survival of the landscaping was pushed from Phase One to Phase Two, and then it was pushed from Phase Two, which is Building Six, to Phase Three, and one of the items that we've had is never solid establishment of, of termination of grass, and the other thing is a constant replacement planting of trees. And so, our two, two goals out here that we've been working on as a staff is to get ground cover in the form of turf grass established, and number two, to have the trees that are planted be cared for long enough that they become established and not have to constantly be replaced. I don't think either the owners or city staff wants that, but that is, and during the spring, there's been another effort out there to go back in and replace those trees that have died. But I didn't know if you had that diagram that depicted that or not, John?
These pictures are pretty recent, and these rap trees are pretty new?
Yes, they've been done this spring, and they, that's been worked on since the time that this application was filed, and we had our last meetings with the applicant. But these should be areas where, in those photographs, you'll see newly planted trees that were planted this spring to replace trees that were either deceased or missing. So, there's, there's been concern, and that you've seen in your packet, expressed by neighboring property owners about that, it's been a item that's, staff's made frequent trips out there for inspections, but the focus of today is whether the, the changes that are proposed from exclusively mini warehouse facility to having an office, to having outdoor pod storage, and to having some change and flexibility to the use of Building Seven, whether you are supportive of those changes to the original planned development district. And with that, I'll attempt to address any questions that you have, but basically, if you find that these changes are substantially in conformance with the original development concept, you could approve those, subject to any conditions or safeguards that you think are appropriate, you could postpone consideration of this application if you think modifications to this plan proposal are in order, you could postpone consideration if you feel you need additional information to reach a decision, or you could deny the applicant's request to further amend this planned development district if you think these changes would injure or damage the use value enjoyment of surrounding property. And again, our, our concern would be to get some clarification, we're not clear as to the desire to add heating or cooling or human occupancy areas in that north building, and if that is the case, we might need to be looking at providing additional parking spaces for the north building if we have human occupancy or heated or cooled space in that north building. So, with that, I'd be happy to address any questions you have about information in your packet.
Dean, how long have they been, or I should say, how long has city staff been working with them on trying to get them in compliance with the landscape requirements as outlined by the previous PDD? How many years?
I think I did my first inspection out there in 2005.
So it's been seven years. And, and then, secondly, that building, have you issued, issued an occupancy permit for Building Seven yet?
No.
And why not?
We have not, because of the lack of satisfactory completion and establishment of the landscaping.
So, so my concern here is we're, we've not even issued an occupancy permit as it was intended the last time it was approved, and now we're being asked to up the level of use from storage to possibly commercial type use, and it doesn't even have an occupancy permit for the previous PDD-approved use. So, I'm a little confused as to why we would even consider that.
Well, that, that is your decision, our, our goal as a staff was to provide the owners and applicants with a roadmap to say, how can we bring this project into compliance? And one of the things about, we call planned development districts, what you see is what you get zoning, and so, there's trade-offs with planned development districts, they can sometimes provide some flexibility for the developer on the front end as far as relaxing some things or, or modifying things, but the flip side of that is that planned development districts are a little more rigid, and that you can't go in and easily change things without coming back for amendments. So, when this came before the planning commission and we had our first hearings on it in 2004, the idea that we were going to have outdoor storage, or that we were going to have pods, or that we were going to insert a office space, or use the north building for anything other than mini warehouse cubicles wasn't really envisioned. But as the, the project has taken hold and demands have changed, and desires for use of space have changed, we've tried to work with the owners, and so, the items that we have identified that don't fit within the original development concept of an exclusive mini warehouse facility are the office in Building Six, the outdoor storage of the pod containers, and having some flexibility in Building Seven as far as storage, or perhaps even human occupancies. And the only thing that, after meeting with the applicants and reviewing the plans, we're still not certain on is the actual floor plan arrangement and the breakdown of space in Building Seven, and whether that is intended for human occupancy. So, part of the reason, or part of the answer to your question about the north building is, as long as the uses in the north building are kind of evolving, you don't really want to issue an occupancy certificate till you know what the final occupancy is going to be. And so, that, that's one of the reasons it is, it is approved for mini warehouse and pod storage. If the desire is to use the north building for office space, vehicle storage, that type of thing, that's going to change the occupancy classification of the building, and so, the idea is to put this in front of the planning commission to see if you're supportive of using the north building for uses other than mini warehouse cubicles, and if that's the case, then we'll work with the owners on finalizing the, the building and fire code-related things that could allow that to happen. But the zoning comes first.
That area is paved, it's hard surface paved with asphalt and concrete?
Concrete.
Yeah.
Yeah, John, you've got that in some of your photos, don't you?
I think I've read that it or something.
Yeah. It's concrete paving throughout. So, I, in your package, you've got the background information, you have a letter from a neighboring property owner, and then you have a series of plans in chronological order that've kind of shown you how this plan has evolved over time.
Well, your, your recommendation, the staff's recommendation is you need more time to get additional information. You're needing from us an agreement to even take in additional information, is that what I'm hearing? Is that, that we'd even consider it, is that what you're wanting, Dean?
And we met with the applicant before this application was filed, and the goal of staff was to close this project out once and for all, to get certificates of occupancy for all the buildings, but to do that, you need to know what the occupancy is for the north building. And as long as ideas were still evolving for the use of that north building, then this is the opportunity to put those before you, so to see if you are supportive of those changes. What we're saying in our staff report is the only thing that we weren't able to clearly pin down and present to you in our staff report is exactly what the vision is for the use of that north building. And that's the purpose of the public hearing today, so the applicants can tell you and tell staff, what are we thinking we want to use that north building for, so we can get all of those out on the table and see if you're supportive of all of those uses. But we can't, we cannot put it before you to see if you're supportive if we're not sure ourselves what those are, so that's why we need to hear from the applicant.
Are we ready to hear from the applicant, gentlemen? All right. If the applicant is present, would you like to address the commission, and for secretary's benefit, would you state your name and address, please?
Absolutely, my name is Derek Lee, I live at 506 Pine Ridge, here in Salina, Kansas, and Marty Simpson is the actual applicant, but I am one of the partners in the project. So I think I can answer your questions today, at least as it relates to the north, really north two buildings. We have a tenant who would like to, Building Seven is split into four equal sections. We have a tenant who would like to lease space in there to store cars, that's very close to the Salina Auto Auction, he preps vehicles to go to auction, so the idea is, oh, thank you. Right here in this space, there is an open one-fourth of that warehouse, he would like to, he knows there's no water at that facility, or at least in that unit, so his idea is to prep those cars elsewhere, but then detail them there, inside the facility, to let people buff the cars, you know, vacuum them, go through them, whatever it takes to detail them and get them ready. If things worked out, he had expressed an interest in, Building Six is into two sections, and at some point, he may, instead of one-fourth of Building Seven, prefer to lease half of Building Six to store more cars, and those cars get stored there until they go to auction or go to a car lot after they're detailed. So that is, that is the intention for Building Six and Seven, you know, to find some way to rent that space out. They've pretty much set empty since construction, obviously we don't have occupancy on Building Seven, and we need to do that so that we can recoup costs and, you know, do something with the facilities.
In terms of heating or cooling or climatized storage, or office space or anything like that, none of those are envisioned for buildings?
No, the, the original building plans for both of those had radiant heaters that ran a coolant underneath the concrete, that was a radiant floor that could heat up through there. The one that was installed on Building Seven turned out not to be as efficient as hoped, and at this time, there is no climate control in either facility. And I guess the intention for us would not be to a commercial process, and I apologize, Dean, what is the name of the classification we're seeking on Buildings Six and Seven?
Well, for Buildings Six and Seven, we would just call that general commercial storage.
Storage, okay.
Right, without, it's not the mini warehouse cubicles, but it, that would allow you to, to include the storage of vehicles or things that had
Sure.
... fuel or things of that nature, that would be things outside the realm of just personal property.
And then you have a sprinkler system and all of that, some fun stuff already built in the, the buildings really are ready for inspection, the landscaping is ready for inspection. My involvement with the project's been about the last year. I got involved, you know, when the, the project was needing another partner or two to come onboard and find a direction and figure out, how do we make this turn of profits we can keep the buildings and keep paying property tax and have a business there, have an investment that at some point pays out.
Car detailing is not considered a human occupancy?
I mean, it's not a human occupancy in terms, you're just, you're going in and out, but it doesn't require that you have an office or restroom facilities, or, we have a term, both in the building code and the zoning code, that you adopted, that refers to non-climatized storage, and that's any area that's used for the storage of vehicles or other things that does not heat it or cool it, or have a permanent employee, or the public's not invited there. So, they might be working inside their building there, but it, it would be similar to what the planning commission approved on West Grand from Mr. LeCure, who rezoned property and build a building to store his antique British autos in, and he goes out there and tinkers on them, but the building's not heated or cooled, and it's not considered a place that's occupied in terms of people reporting to work there. So, the difference is, the office space in Building Six is considered to be human occupancy and occupied space, and I can come out there if I want to talk about pods, or talk about renting a space, or whatever, I, I can go to that office and it's set up for people to be there. But the, the buildings to the north would be considered non-climatized general storage, which we have a number of buildings like that around the community, there aren't mini warehouses, it's, it's more open-ended.
I have a question about the pods. The, I understand the idea is to be able to allow individuals to access those
Sure.
... during the off-hours.
Mm-hmm.
But then that means that you could pretty much have those out there every single day, because you'd have individuals that may not be able to access them on the off-hours of a Monday, followed by some on a Tuesday, so
Sure.
The end result is that you have those, you very well could have those out there all the time, is that accurate?
That could, that's absolutely feasible. Could you put the overall map back up? The thought with where they're at here is, this land behind there is property that we own to the river, there's nobody back there, so with the pods behind the building, they would not be visible from the neighborhood. When people look at the property, they're hidden behind Buildings Six and Seven, and would be absolutely not visible. The same thing here, we put some volunteer and took a picture from outside, as long as they are single-stacked here, which is the intention and what we're asking for, those are not visible from the neighborhood or from outside.
Dean, do we know where, in relation, this letter, where this property owner is? Because they seem to be concerned about the pods.
I think they are
They're directly across the street on the
Hopefully you hear?
I think they're right in that unit there that Derek's pointing to, they live on the east side of Foxborough, directly across the street.
And certainly their concerns over landscape are noted, the grass is very close to being done, you know, without construction and stuff driving across it. Last summer was brutal, and it was very hard to keep some of those trees alive. We did have a landscaping company that last week completed an upgraded irrigation system. There's two more zones in it to ensure that the trees have enough water, the trees have been replaced, and there's one more overseeding of the grass that we believe with that, we'll have full grass established.
Derek, if, oh, excuse me, go ahead, I'm
Certainly.
Well, the pods are only seven feet tall, right?
Correct.
And the fence is six.
Correct.
And you can't double-deck them because people have to be able to access them.
Correct.
And there's not any new access, you're all using the existing driveway and gate.
Correct, yes, sir.
So, for all practical purposes, it's very little difference. When I went out and looked two and a half weeks ago, I walked completely around the complex, and the few pods that were out there are barely visible over the fence, you have to know they're there. So, I see no problem with that.
Derek, if you change the focus of the use of those two larger buildings from pod storage to more commercial-type storage, meaning automobiles, then the assumption would be the pod storage will move to the outside because it can no longer be inside, is that correct?
No, the only storage for pods would be those few spaces outside, and that, that wouldn't be significant enough to do anything with pod storage, so if those other spaces were to be rented, we have other facilities in town.
Oh.
There's a larger warehouse up north where empty pods can go, and we certainly do not see the occupied pods going beyond available space. In fact, we're selling down on those to some other states and other companies, and what we want to manage in pods will certainly fit inside.
Thank you.
So, do you, just to help us, for Building Six, you see that as also the general commercial storage?
That is correct, and that was one clarification, because the gentleman interested here, if that worked out well for him proximity-wise, could get twice the square footage or twice as many cars here, and that is
Because of the way it's divided.
Yeah. It gets divided in two instead of four.
So to clarify that, it would essentially be, you'd have a complex with mini warehouse complex in Buildings 1 through 5, and then Buildings 6 and 7 would be opened up to any type of general commercial storage that the, the building and fire codes would permit. And they wouldn't, they would no longer be viewed as exclusively for storage of pods.
Yeah, there's another company that stores documents that has an interest in one of these when we get to the point that we can show it to them. Again, non-climatized storage is what he would like. It would be accessed very rarely. But they need a permanent place that's somewhat secure to put that, and it would fit their needs well.
Is there any way we could restrict on, if my eyes are looking correctly, I'm counting about 40, actually 36 pods on there. Is there any way to restrict that by doing that? If we do that, because if he's wanting to hide those behind there, then I'm assuming that building, I'm taking a guess, is 80 feet, or what's the width of that building?
Building 6 is 75 feet wide. Building 7 is 70. And the pods are six feet wide.
So again, looking at maybe 11 pods on Building 6 and because of the circular part, I don't know if that helps at all for the neighbor who has written a concern to make sure that those pods stay behind that building since you can't stack them. It may give a little bit more governing to it that if somebody did complain, we'd be able to have something in, in writing that you agreed to for us to be able to say, you have 92 pods out there. That's in excess of the 34 that we agreed upon.
Absolutely.
Still doesn't answer where you put the pods. I mean, you can put 36 pods all over, but at least that gives you ample storage than to say, well, we don't have room to hide the pods. Well, you've got room to hide 36 pods.
Right.
But what you would be saying in terms of your action is that the, what happens on a planned development district on something like this is the, upon your action, if it results in an amended plan being approved, then we put a stamp on it, a signature and a date that that occurred. And what you're saying, if you approve this, is that you're approving pod storage in those areas, and a pod started to be stored down at the south end, we would simply pull this drawing out and say, planning commission approved, pod storage in those areas, which would make it, just numerically, there's only so many pods you can put in that area. But just, so you're understanding, you're asking to, being asked to look at this drawing, and if those two areas are acceptable for outdoor storage, those would be the two areas that would be allowed for the outdoor storage, not at the south end or in any of the other aisles or anything.
I just had another thought that I could see would bother neighbors. Is there any chance that the used cars being brought in and out of there are going to be brought in on semi-trailer transporters? And if so, where do they load and unload?
They would not.
Okay.
At least not with the specific tenant that we have. He has drivers that bring them in and drop them off, and they'd be from local and then, you know, right behind there to the Salina Auto Auction or to their dealership, but, you know, one, two at a time.
Right. Okay. So that we wouldn't have the problem of a semi trying to unload in the street because they can't get
Correct.
Into the complex itself.
Correct.
Any idea how many vehicles could be stored either in Building 7 or Building 6?
In, sure. One of these units where it's divided into a fourth, you could theoretically, you wouldn't have room to detail one. You can go three vehicles wide and four deep. To work on the vehicles, you could go two vehicles wide, three deep. So whenever from six to 12 cars.
That would double.
That would double. You'd be 12 to 24 vehicles over here, correct?
And they can stack them in there?
The vehicles?
Yeah, they could find some kind of a...
Sure. Yeah, if they put lifts.
Device to double them up and down.
Absolutely.
And what's the intended use of the office space?
Uh, the office, we have, have hired a manager to manage the overall project and a couple other business interests. And the idea is, right now, she has an office downtown and has to go out there to collect checks or to check on the property or to check on the landscaping or, you know, to let somebody into a unit. So the idea is that if we have an onsite office, it gives her more control over watering the grass. It gives her more control over bringing bills in or somebody getting in that hasn't paid their bill or, you know, whatever the issue is. And she's onsite, and when they call, she's there to meet them instead of having to schedule a time and potentially losing them. So having an onsite office lets us put our manager there so that she can take care of customers and the grounds a little better.
You know, I drove up by there last night because I wanted to see. The landscaping looks really nice at this point. I mean, I can see the grass is coming on. And the fence is well-maintained on the residential side, and it's, it looks to be an eight-foot fence. Is that right? It's either six or eight.
I don't know.
Six, I didn't, but the pods, you couldn't, if there were any out there, they'd be impossible to see because of the fence, I believe, unless they were especially stacked on the backside because the angle from standing across, six feet, you can't see them. So I don't know that I have a problem with pods outside in that area myself, so. I think, Dean, you're needing to work with the applicant on the actual uses of those facilities before we can take any formal action anyway. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, and we just, I think this, this is helpful for you and it's helpful for us just to, the, the basic, as I summarize, the basic gist of it is, is Buildings 1 through 5 would be your traditional, what you think of as mini warehouse complex, and the, the demand for, need for five more of those similar buildings was not there. So the buildings that were built in the north were originally designed and built for double-stack pod storage, which is why they're taller than the other buildings. And what they're finding in their experience and ability to market is that they need more flexibility in Buildings 6 and 7. And I think from just the staff perspective is that if the fence is there and well-maintained, and we get a mature, established landscape buffer where the trees can actually survive and grow, what happens behind the fence is not of great concern.
Agreed.
As long as the, the, the whole issue of this from the start was, you've got residential on one side and non-residential on the other, and what can you do to make the two compatible? And having a well-established and maintained buffer on the east side adjacent to Foxborough was the goal from the start. And that makes what happens behind the fence a little less of a concern if the fence is maintained and the landscaping is established.
Are there any concerns that after you make a special use permit for general storage on the larger buildings that we're going to have bleed over into the mini storage? I mean, how do we control that, Dean?
Well, I mean, that, that just by being upfront about, the, part of it is controlled by the building code and the fire code in terms of the five-south buildings are, don't have fire separation walls in them or anything because they're designed for that. So you can't, you can't readily convert the five-south buildings into anything but what they're designed and built for. But that's, that's our responsibility on, on that side. But we just felt that as long as the Buildings 6 and 7 in Phase 2 was still evolving, that because the planned development district is, is fixed and limited to mini warehouse, that we needed to get a full clarification and presentation to you about projected uses for Building 6 and 7. And if you're comfortable with those from a zoning standpoint, then we will work with the owners to make sure that the buildings themselves are suitable for those uses.
Other remarks or questions for the applicant? Mr. Simpson, did you, anything you wanted to say?
No.
Don't have to.
Just like the opportunity to allow business to perform well, and this is the direction we have to go to get that to happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Is there any comment from the public? They're being done. I'll bring it back to the commission, gentlemen. Any other questions or comments to staff, or is there a motion on this item?
Well, our only comment, and John, you've got that down there at, at the bottom somewhere, but the, one of the things that as this is done in phases and the planning commission looks at it in phases, and there are various conditions of approval related to the planned development district, we had, wanted to make sure that as this is, has moved through in different points of time, that, that nothing was lost, but we just wanted to go, go back over for you what, what the planning commission at the last change when the Phase 2 was put forward. These were the conditions of approval that were imposed by the planning commission in 2009 when Phase 2 plans were put forward. And we would want to make sure that you reviewed those, and we assured you that this is no longer relevant because building permits have been issued, but this, this would continue to be relevant. And the, the front yard landscaping, that the affirmative obligation to replace missing or dead plantings, including back into Phase 1, is, is still in place. So the, the only things I've heard was some additional things about no double-stacking and whether you want to have a numerical limit on the total number of pods stored outdoors. Those are possible additional conditions, but we just wanted to clarify for you. If your action is favorable, then we will make sure that these conditions don't get eliminated just because they have to be carried forward from previous actions. But the two that I heard that were possibly new was that the outdoor storage not involve double-stacking of pods and a possible numerical limitation on the number.
Would it be helpful in regards to the potential numerical limitation on the number to go ahead and quantify that now?
I truly believe that, that if we're splitting this into general storage and, and mini storage, that it talks, it, it answers itself. Your mini, your pods are going to be behind a fence. You can't see them behind the fence. As long as the general storage is the two buildings to the north and the pods are, are in that general storage area, the mini storage area, I mean, how do you store pods over there anyway? I mean, is that basically what you're saying?
You could set them on the ground.
The general storage area, is, are they going to be able to store pods outside in the mini storage area?
And those areas are defined, and I think the definition of that area limits the number, yeah. It limits the number of pods.
Yeah. Limit the number of pods, anyway?
Well, they're not long-term storage, which is for off-hours accessibility, and so they're temporary in nature, which I don't know if that makes sense to limit the number in terms of temporary in nature because I don't know what the demand of that is, but...
It becomes, it becomes another problem for the staff to go out and make encounter all the time, how many are out here and how many aren't. And, you know, I think you, you make it easier if you just limit maybe an area of the general storage against the mini pod or mini storage.
I think you could stand out on Foxborough and see the mini stores over the, I mean, the fence is six foot tall, but my peripheral view, the further you get back, I mean, if you were just to start stacking pods out in the middle of that area, if I lived across the street, I'd be able to see those pods. Right now, I can't see them if they're behind that building. If they just were to leave the vaults outside between the two buildings that are there, I would be able to see 20 foot back over a six-foot fence to see a vault.
That comes a lot, I think, Todd, with, with the landscaping, being able to, to keep that going and growing and, and if that, if they can get that, that to help out, I don't know that that's a...
I'm not sure I see enough landscaping there to hide, I mean, those little trees aren't going to grow, those little cedar trees aren't going to grow that tall that are down there.
The plan in front of us seems to indicate where the outside storage will be. The plan also seems to indicate what you intend to have out there as far as outside storage. It's kind of hard to act on ambiguity here. We don't know what it's going to be. I think staff wants the approval to move back and work with the applicant and determine how the layout will be for the two larger buildings. And staff, in my opinion, could work with the applicant. If this is the plan that comes back to us for approval, then we can act on it then. But to try to sit here now and figure out exactly how many storage pods are going to be outside, that's really something staff, I think, can handle in meetings with the owner and the applicant and make a recommendation to us.
Agreed.
Agreed.
And basically, if you were to approve this, it means you're approving this plan, and the only locations where stores, could, storage could occur outdoors is those three shown. Locations as shown. And so you can address it that way, or you can, you can, we can count these up and, and say no more than that many. But what it's basically saying is, outdoor storage is limited to this area and this area and this area and nowhere else. And that's what we would carry forward.
That's what I see.
Are we also stating that any detailing with cars in all has to be done within the buildings? Has that been stated, whether they can roll the cars out in the parking lot?
That has not been stated, but you'd be the judge of that again, and whether it occurs in the building or if it occurs behind the fence outside, whether that is a concern of yours. I mean, we don't, when somebody else like Mr. LeCure builds a building on West Grand, we don't require that he, he can't pull his building, his cars out of the building and, and work on them. So you're, you're, you're basically can be as specific or nonspecific about that as you wish. But...
The chair's ready to receive a motion. Is there somebody that wants to?
I'd be happy to make a motion if I was clear on what the motion should be. I, Dean, are you wanting the motion to be to approve the plan in front of us as it exists right there with the understanding they can use Buildings 6 and 7 for commercial use? Commercial-type use?
If you look at
Is that what, is that what you want the motion to be?
Page nine of your staff report and planning commission alternatives down to the bottom states that if the planning commission finds that the applicant's proposed amended plan, which is this plan, if you find that still conforms to the original development concept, you could approve that plan subject to any conditions or safeguards that you think are appropriate. And the safeguards that have been discussed was a numerical limitation on pods, was no double-stacking of pods, and if there's a need for clarification about where the auto detailing takes place. If we look at our own corner of Fifth and Ash where there's an auto detailing business, sometimes they work on the cars inside the bay, and sometimes they work on them outside the bay, and we generally don't differentiate. I think if you expect to have auto detailing there, it, it might be a little bit, if it's behind a fence, micromanaging whether it's in or out of a building, as long as everybody understands that auto detailing could take place there.
Well, I'll try for a motion. You guys feel free to jump in. But I would make a motion that we approve the plan as presented in front of us to include the office space as proposed, to include outdoor storage as identified on the plan and in the location, general location identified on the plan, and to include Buildings 6 and 7 as limited commercial application as per authorized by city's codes. You'll have some codes on what kind of fire suppression.
There'll be fire and building codes.
That's all out of our league, and that'll have to be managed by city requirements, but to meet city requirements. That would be my, huh? And no stacking. No stacking too deep of pods.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion, the application carries, motion carries. Number three, application Z-12-2. Staff, for comments there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have been working our way through step by step, and the first step was coming And the first step was coming up with agreed-upon content for a public use zoning district. And as if you recall, we had three sub-districts within that, which was public facilities, which would be our parks and recreation facilities, fire stations, water towers, things of that nature, Friendship Center, things like that. Educational facilities, which would be schools, athletic fields, support operations. And then an exposition district, which focused primarily on Kenwood Park area, which would be the bicentennial center, County 4-H Building, fairgrounds. Each of those are public uses in nature, but each of those schools have different needs and roles than the city's operations. So, we had those three sub-districts. And so our focus was on, you've got the code adopted. We moved forward and fleshed out a set of signed regulations for the public use district. And now that that's been finalized, the final step is to determine which properties and facilities within the city should be rezoned from their current designation to public use. And so, the district would then need to be mapped with property owners being notified of the proposed change. So, as I indicated, we decided we'd start with school district properties because they're more finite than the list of city-owned property and a little more focused as to what those uses are. And so, we have, this was not in your packet, but we have this map, which corresponds to the list of schools and their current zoning classification, which we have in your packet. And these are the properties that we identified for the initial wave of rezoning. And in anticipation of that, which we did not realize exactly what we were getting into, but we sent out 735 notification letters yesterday to people who own property in proximity to all the schools. And so, our first step today is to look at the map, look at this list, and look at what zoning we have in place today. And what the primary change is that some of these would have been conditional uses earlier, but when the zoning ordinance was updated in 1977, the ordinance converted what were conditional uses to permitted. So, what you'll see is that any school there that was built before 1977 probably doesn't have a CUP designation by it, whereas the ones that are more recent, such as Cottonwood, Lakewood, Oakdale, Metalark has a conditional use permit associated with their parking area. But you can see that the predominant use and zoning designation is R1, single-family residential. So, the proposal is that each of these school sites would be rezoned from the residential designation to the public use designation and then use the public use district as what we would refer to for guidance on any projects. And what we told property owners in their letters is that, say, Oakdale Elementary School was built, the addition there, under a conditional use permit. If there were modifications made to parking or further additions or other changes, the conditional use permit would be off the books. And as long as the school district stayed within the defined Oakdale campus, then building additions, parking modifications, playfields, things like that, would not be part of a public use, public hearing and notification, but would simply be permitted. And so, the two on there that are maybe a little different are the Heartland Early Education Center, which used to be Kennedy School, and then the USD 305 administrative offices were done as a planned development district because everything around there was residential and what the principal use is, is administrative offices. And since you could not really support a full rezoning to a commercial office district in that type of location, it was done as a planned development district. So, we don't see any reason for that planned development district to remain in place if, since administrative offices would be a permitted use in the public use district. So, we got this list there and we just wanted to see if there was concurrence with the Planning Commission that to move forward on the actual zoning change. If you were familiar with all these properties, knew where they were located on the map, then the next step would be by June 5th, we would have full legal descriptions of all these properties and not just addresses and zoning designations, but because to change the zoning designation, we've got to do it for a legally described area. So, if from your perspective and the school district's perspective, you think we're on the right track, we'll move forward with that and we'll also send letters to Sacred Heart and Salina Christian Academy explaining what option is available with the public use district and see if they wish to participate. But every, in anticipation that we were on the right track, letters have been sent out to property owners within 200 feet of each of these sites explaining what the change to public use district would mean. And so, there, we've got a number of calls in response to the letters. Unfortunately, some of the property owners, what the map looks like is the request area that the school district owns is shaded in gray. And then we put an oval around that, which is all the owners within 200 feet. And some of the owners mistook that as school expansion areas, that that was the area where the schools were going to expand. And they said, does this mean that the school district's going to try to buy my property? And the answer was no. This just defines the area around the school that's affected by it. So, the actual public hearing where you might hear from any neighbors who have questions or wanting clarifications would be on the 5th. But we wanted to make sure that from your perspective and the school district's perspective that this is what everybody understood and expected would happen. And the other one that's not on the list, and then we can have further discussion about is the Hagaman Elementary School site and the USD 305 maintenance facility. And the reason that we didn't put that on there is that is a phased project, one that's still under development. And the other wildcard there is there's a property on that campus that may or may not ultimately be developed for educational use. But that is another facility that's there. But this is the use that we focused on and the two, the administrative offices and the Heartland Center are not traditional elementary, middle, or high schools, but we thought those were appropriate to include.
Hagaman's got a blur.
What's that?
You say Hagaman location's got something.
Well, it has future phases in that aren't, we don't have plans for yet that you saw conceptually. But there's also a piece of property on Broadway that may or may not end up ultimately being part of that campus. So, it was, that is more a work in progress and maybe when that site is fully developed, that would be a time to come back and revisit that. But we did not include it in this initial application.
There's a couple of things here, Dean, I have to say, and I sent you an email about Hagaman because I was confused why it wasn't included either. In fact, about three years ago, when you and I talked about working towards a public use zoning, our conversation hinged around Hagaman. So, you can understand my ultimate surprise when it wasn't on there. The second thing is, we've not had, this has come along about pretty quickly. We got the, we finally got the approval through, but there's some action on the Board of Education's part. They'll have to have some consideration time for this as well. Now, I see you've sent out letters. I got a stack up and down on my desk of notification for this and the hearing is June 5th. So, from the district's perspective, we want an opportune time for the public to have some input into this. And in regard to that, we don't have to change these zonings. Isn't that correct? I mean, is it going to be mandatory or is it optional on the part of the Board of Education?
Well, it's optional as you can take the position, what we agreed to do was rather than make the school district be the applicant, the Planning Commission agreed to initiate this for all, so they'd be initiating it on behalf of Salina County, the City of Salina, and USD 305. What we did not initiate it on behalf of was Salina Christian Academy or Sacred Heart because they weren't really in participation of that. So, they could choose to participate or not.
So, therefore, we the, sort of the test balloon here of this because I see only the school district properties listed, no others at this time. And so, I, you know, and I'm still, I'll go back to my question. May we stay as we are if the Board of Education chooses to do so? Or is it going to be required that we rezone?
It is not required that you rezone. But as, but as we discussed and worked our way through this, we specifically developed, crafted, and adopted signed regulations for the public use district that will only be a benefit if the school district property is in fact zoned public use district.
We don't disagree with, from the district's perspective, we don't disagree with that. There are basically four properties, there's five properties that really truly need this zoning because they're out of compliance now in a residential type environment. Elementary school's not so much. The high school, as we know, has had all kinds of things happen over the years under residential, both high schools. The, and then the middle schools, same thing. We have additional outdoor facilities and so forth that have all been somehow approved over the years. But the elementary schools are certainly, would not necessarily need to be rezoned. So, therefore lies my question. The other one is, the Board has got to have time now because, to discuss this and determine if this is the direction they want to go with all their properties or if they would wish to exempt some from that. So, that's, my question is, we don't have to go with all of them. Is that correct?
Right. We could get to the end of this and end up rezoning zero of these schools.
And Hagaman is one that's currently under development and certainly it's under PDD right now. It has some other uses that are intended, but if it's rezoned public use, then those other intended uses would be educational uses. They would be permissible under public use. And that's one of the reasons we proposed this, was to look at that as we develop it central, as we develop it south, as we develop it Lakewood, as we develop it South Middle School, as we develop it Hagaman, which have space for development, that it would be, those uses would already be approved and not have to go through the PDD process each time. That was one of the goals and we've left Hagaman off of this list. So, you know, I think we've got some work to do yet at the Planning Commission level and certainly at the Board level before we're ready to make a proposal of acceptance.
And the reason you have a whole stack of those
Is a note.
Letters is that on June 5th, the school district can inform the Planning Commission of what their position is on each and every one of those sites. The purpose of today's meeting is to say, step one was developing a actual set of regulations for the public use district. Step two was supplementing that by developing a set of signed regulations. Step three is, if you're going to have a new set of regulations and a new set of signed regulations, what property is that going to apply to? And now we're at that third stage and it's for USD 305 to tell the Planning Commission which of these, if any, you'd like
Right.
To be rezoned to public use
That answers my question.
District. And the purpose of this is to say on behalf of the Planning Commission, these are the properties we've identified and their current status. Are we doing what you expected us to do in terms of, and that would include the school district? Are we doing on everyone's behalf? And part of the reason we're doing the schools first is because they're more manageable and part of the reason is that you have a number of properties that might benefit from this sooner rather than later.
And when we do rezone, well, what will be the responsibility of the owner in each one of these rezoning processes? Will they have to, they won't have to replat, but will they have to pay filing fees and all that for the rezoning or not necessary? It's all handled.
It's already been filed by, the Planning Commission is initiating this.
So, be no cost involved.
So, the school district's option is to say, well, thank you for initiating this, but we want to stay just the way we are.
We have our list here and at this point, I think the next most interesting thing would be the response from USD 305.
To take, take this list and you can, the purpose of June 5th is, is to get the school district's position and also to get, so if any neighbor got a letter and said, I live across the street from Hughesner School, what does this mean to me? And the school district could say, it means nothing because we're going to leave Hughesner the way it is or we desire to.
That was the reason for my question.
What about the property at Second and Third Street and Mulberry, the old Washington School Site Education Center? Is that still owned by the school district?
Part of that, a small part of that avenue is owned by the school district and a part of it is city-owned property.
Okay.
And so, we use it under a long-term lease agreement arrangement that we use the facility. But the front 300 foot
The very south part is owned by the school district. And the remainder is actually owned by the City of Salina, which has agreed to allow the school district to use it as long as it's used for school purposes. But that is a potential candidate as well if that is still viewed as a long-term educational.
And it's probably what, R2 or something like that?
R3.
R2 or R3?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, we don't need any specific action on this though, right? It's just looking at this list and saying, yes, that's good.
We just would want, this is to tell you what we're doing and also to tell you that the formal input hearing would be June 5th. And if the school board needs additional time beyond that, then the hearing would simply be continued. But the final step is actually taking the map and saying, okay, what properties within the city should be zoned public use instead of what they're zoned today? This is the start of that and to lay it out for you and for both you as a Planning Commission and
And go back to the Board.
You're agreeing to basically sponsor these changes on behalf of the school district and the school district can say no thank you to any or all because it's your property.
Good deal. Thank you. I think I look forward to the response from 305 at this point.
So, there is no formal action that's needed today other than to say, we understand this is a necessary step and to keep things moving forward, then the actual public hearing would be on June 5th. And you would, if the Planning, if the Planning Commission is ready to receive formal input, it would occur at that time. But again, the letters for every one of these sites was set out at one time. And so, I didn't get the final count there, but the school district could have received 13 letters or something like that at one time.
I'll go what I've got. Being on the public hearing agenda, is there anybody from the public that wants to comment at this point?
It's not.
There being none, can we move on to the next application?
Yeah. The only thing we can say is that the formal public hearing would be on June 5th. The only thing we can say is that the formal public hearing would be on June 5th to actually receive formal input.
Number four, application Z12-3, parking, off-street parking surfacing requirements.
This is, again, is a, is a background report just to frame how this issue's been handled historically, and we've got some, some photographs here for you. I'm bound to get a call from Mr. Berger tomorrow because anytime I use his property as an example, he'll call me. But this is an example of what we call a pre-existing, non-conforming gravel parking lot. And what we're being asked to look at is, the city has basically had three positions. In pre-1988, it was whatever the property owner decides is the permission. So if Central Mall could have been built with gravel parking if, if that's what they decided to do because it was left entirely to the owner's discretion. In 1988, amendment was passed that basically eliminated the option for having gravel parking except for some narrow exceptions, and then required two things. One, if you did something on a piece of property that involved a more intensive occupancy or you had a change in use, or in any event within five years from 1988, you had to go back and pave your entire existing parking lot. So, I don't, John's got, I don't even know where we're at here, John. Is this on Pacific?
All right, this one is.
Okay. Well, the example being that if you did, if you had somebody move out and somebody move in that was a more intensive use, then that would trigger the paving of this entire lot, or within five years, the entire, every gravel lot in the city would have to be paved, which both legally and practically wasn't very realistic. And so that, that was realized in 1990 when the city staff notified property owners that they now only had three years to pave all their parking lots. And there was quite a bit of negative reaction to that, and the city commission asked for this issue to be sent back and revisited by the planning commission. And so we went out, did, and I, this was not a census, it was just kind of a visual survey, but we went out and we found 40 businesses and six churches and four schools, and even the city's municipal swimming pool had gravel parking. And so, but the majority of these were located in North Salina. So there was a, a petition that was circulated, and the petition actually requested that the whole thing be repealed and that we go back to where we were. And there was a 39-page petition that was submitted to the planning commission asking for that repeal. And so one of the concerns, which is true about any kind of text amendment, if you do a text amendment, we do a general notice in the newspaper, and there's a, a general notice of, of the agenda and all, but basically the text amendment was approved and there wasn't a general notice in the community that we now had a paved parking requirement. So the primary objections were, nobody told us that the ordinance changed, and the other objection was the cost of compliance of going back and paving all the gravel lots. So the planning commission had two hearings, and they basically came back and recommended that existing gravel lots be grandfathered, and only the newer and large parking area, if you had a change of use or new construction, would have to be paved. And then if you were in a residential district and you had a use that required six or fewer spaces, they didn't have to be paved. And then had some general maintenance responsibilities if you did have gravel. And the city commission unanimously approved all those changes, and they've been in effect ever since. And so has, new projects have come in and somebody wanted a waiver or variance or exception from paving, there's not been a single case where the Board of Zoning Appeals or City Commission has granted such a waiver, except what we're not seeing happening since that time is that there's not really many mechanisms or triggers as to when you eliminate the gravel parking and, and improve the property up to a paved standard. So one of the things we wanted to bring forward to you today and discuss was to look at those different triggering mechanisms and just to get some input from you as to when, if ever, it's appropriate to go back and retrofit a gravel parking lot and bring it up to a paved condition. So this, this is a recent project that is not complete yet, but this is a former retail liquor store at the corner of Santa Fe and Pacific. And we received plans to come in and have a, a drive-up window and have a shaved ice business here similar to Snow Wizard on South Ohio. And so we looked at this area, which is all pre-existing gravel, and the actual parking requirement for employees or customers for a drive-up facility such as actually less for a drive-up shaved ice business than it was for a retail liquor store. So that change of use could occur, this building could be modified, and the gravel could stay as is. And in theory, you could tear this building back, you could tear it down, build something new there, and as long as the parking requirement remained equal or the same, you didn't have to expand it, you could build a new building and not have to pave the parking because the parking's grandfathered in. So we were thinking that there, there must be a median in there somewhere between gravel being grandfathered in forever and nothing triggering an upgrade and having anything you do trigger an upgrade. But we thought, we'd give you some illustrations here, and said, this is a recent one where we just issued permits to go in there and renovate this space for a shaved ice business, and the, under our current ordinance, the gravel is going to remain. And if they're
When you, when you did that survey in 93, there were 56 properties on the, on the list?
That, that was done in 1990, and I, I don't think
So in 21 years, has the list reduced any?
I don't think so because there's nothing that, other than doing it voluntarily, there's nothing that would trigger the city's ability to require that.
Is a change in ownership a trigger that can be used that would be effective in the case of these 56 had that been implemented?
Well, to be, to be legally, I mean, grandfathering is, it's a pretty protected right, but there are things that eliminate the ability to grandfather by something that the applicant does, but simply a change of ownership is generally not reason enough to say, well, now that you've sold this property, the new owner needs to pave it. It's generally triggered by something that happens on the property. And so the difference between what was passed in 1988 and what was passed in 1990 was, in 1988, if you do this, if you build a new building, if you do an addition or change to more intense occupancy, you have to go back and pave everything. Whereas in 1990, what we're living under today is if you do an addition or you build something that creates the need for newer additional parking, that newer additional parking has to be paved, but you don't have to go back and do anything to the gravel if you don't choose to. And so we'll, John, if you could go back to Ashen, Ohio, we'll pick on that one. But the question is, what do members of the planning commission see as if there was a change here, whether it was a new building or an addition or anything else, what event or activity that might occur on this property could justify requiring that the gravel parking that's there be converted to a paved lot?
Are there materials in between that now that you may be put out like gravel but will sort of melt together and become something solid that's realistic?
Not, not really. We've, we've tried that on some others, and it hasn't, hasn't worked.
Dean, how do they get by with, is there any ADA issues with gravel versus anything with, as far as a hard surface or?
Well, we do have the oddity, you can find some of those around where you'll have an entirely gravel lot with one paved ADA space. I, I can think of one over on Cherry Street, which is a gravel street, where there's a auto service place over there that has a gravel lot, and up next to the building is a single paved ADA space which has a path of travel up to the entrance to the building, but everything else is gravel. So there, there, but the ADA is driven by a project that requires a building permit. And so if, if you never obtain a building permit, then you don't have to make any modifications to add those spaces. They are at risk, somebody could theoretically file a claim with the Justice Department or whatever to say that, that there's no accessible parking, but what, what that is enforced under is under a building permit. And so you're familiar with the Sally Enfield property over there on Iron where she had an insurance office in there for a time? And that house was not handicapped accessible. And as long as no building permits were applied for to modify that structure, it could be used as is even though it was not accessible. But if you obtain a building permit to make physical modifications, then that's what triggers the ADA modifications.
Well, the only two things I can see now that would potentially do it, like for one, I think we could address the corner there of the new little shaved ice that's going in. I would think that if you could put a stronger restriction on any building that's raised and a new building permit applied for, would trigger parking, no matter whether you were adding the same occupancy or the same amount, amount of people. The other thing around that, because I know you can get around things like that, which is by leaving one wall of the existing building, so you're not really building a new building, you're doing that. So any, the other way you could get around that is any addition that doubles more than the existing square footage of the grandfathered building would trigger parking. I'm just trying to think of legal ways that they would, you would actually have to do that. Then the other one would be, if you did do an addition, not only would you have to pave the new parking, but it would also trigger the existing parking as well. Now, that one I could be persuaded on because that may prevent existing businesses from wanting to expand, adding jobs because they say, gosh, I don't want to do, I can afford the $100,000 addition, but I can't afford the other $90,000 to pave the front parking lot, and therefore, I'm not going to do it, and we don't add four more jobs to the community.
And, and that is, that is the balance.
Dean, is this a nuisance issue because of dust? Is this a aesthetic issue, that concrete is prettier than crushed stone, which that looks like concrete? I know it's not. What, what's the issue here that we want to get rid of gravel lots for?
Well, there was some feedback and indication in, in the comprehensive plan discussions and the follow-up about, and it's pretty well, the objections are pretty well summarized there on page one, but the blowing dust can be a problem. We've had problems over time with depressions and potholes that hold standing water. There is a concern about gravel that does get drug into the street or end up in the storm drain, and then it, it's a matter of, of perception, but there are those that believe that gravel parking lots are unsightly or give the appearance of being a neglected or substandard property if, if the property is gravel. And, I mean, you can have a concrete lot that can have weeds growing up in it, but there is, I mean, we have had experience with gravel lots that over time have potholes, weeds, things of that nature. And so some have the perception that gravel lots detract from the overall appearance of the community.
Okay, thank you.
Has staff seen anything in other communities that you would lean towards that?
The only thing I've seen that we don't have, which, which could be an option, is that the, similar to a variance process where it would give, it has a general paving requirement, but it would give a, as a safety valve, the ability of a property owner who had a project or whatever to come forward and show financial hardship and have to document the financial hardship that, that would show the project is unfeasible if the paving were required just as a safety valve. But most, most communities don't allow gravel even as an option. And we presently, which is a, it's a separate issue, is that we allow businesses that are in I-2 or I-3 zoning to have gravel parking. And the Airport Authority that has a lot of I-2 and I-3 zoning, they have private covenants that require paving. So even though I, we have I-2 and I-3 zoning out in the airport industrial area, all those parking lots are paved and not gravel because the Airport Authority requires it as a covenant. So the, the two questions are, some, some communities do not allow even residential driveways to be gravel. We allow residential driveways to be gravel. We also allow lots in I-2 and I-3 to be gravelled, but nowhere else. But we, we can obviously
Gentlemen, are you in favor of directing staff to go forward with this review? We'll hear it another time when they have a complete presentation for us.
I agree.
We can, can we get a consensus? Yeah, let's just, we'll make a motion, and Todd, you want to do that? And we'll move forward.
I'll make a motion that staff continue the study and bring back any
We can divide you with some language from other communities if
Yeah, bring back any other additional language from communities for us to review at a later time.
Second.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item number five is an administrative item. I'm going to recommend that because of the quasi-judicial nature of this, of the request in that item, that we go into a closed session. The item is to adopt findings in support of the planning commission's decision to not approve application CU-03-2B filed by the Regional Health Center requesting the amendment change for the conditional use permit at the hospice center. Is there a motion to that effect?
Chairman, I'll be stepping down for a conflict of interest.
Yes, thank you.
I'll make a motion to move to executive session.
Sir? Is there a second? Is there a time on that? How much time do you think we need to discuss these findings?
Half hour, 20 minutes.
20 minutes?
I think that'd be good, 20 minutes.
20 minutes. Your motion? Okay.
Make a motion and go into executive session until 5:50.
Okay. All in favor of moving into the closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just for the benefit of, of those in the audience here at the May 7th meeting, the City Commission acknowledged that the receipt of a written appeal that had been filed by the Salina Regional Health Center, and that appeal being acknowledged has been perfected. They then referred this item back to today's agenda to further articulate the reasons for the Planning Commission's failure to approve that application on April 17th, and they set May 21st as the hearing date to, for the City Commission to consider everything that the Planning Commission had decided. So the purpose of your ability to go into a closed session is to allow you to further articulate reasons for your action on April 17th. So, the, it is a closed session, so only the seven members who participated at the April 17th meeting, which would be you seven gentlemen there, can recess into room 107B, and will take notes, and then any action that's taken would have to be done out here
Test is called the OR-